Let's call the meeting to order. Mary, do you want me to read it? I'll just read the notice that was posted. L. Notice, Town of Clinton, Notice of a Public Hearing, A Proposed Ordinance Establishing a Citation Procedure for Violations of Zoning Regulations. Notice is hereby given at the Selectmen of the Town of Clinton Hold a Public Hearing on Wednesday, December 12, 2012, 6:30 PM. We're a little bit beyond that. As long as we don't start before, we're okay. At the William Stanton Andrews Memorial Town Hall, 54 East Main Street, Clinton, Connecticut, for the following purpose: To accept public comment on the proposal to enact the following ordinance. I don't know if anybody needs copies of this. I think we can get some made up. And Mary has some at the table. If you need a copy, you can certainly come and grab a copy. Okay. We will start the public hearing. Start the public hearing with comments from people that are in favor of the ordinance proposed. Anybody in favor? Anyone who wants to speak? No? Anybody opposed? Lori, I state your name, Lori, get her to record.
Lori Haig.
And address.
64 Grove Way. And I'm seeing here a lot of sense. It's trying to make a whole lot of sense. It says, um, about the time. Uh, where is it? Shoot, I'm just reading. It's not the first time. Anyway, basically, none of the notices seem to be the certified letter of urgency. I think every single notice should be certified letter of urgency. The date of the violation should start from the date of the signature of the turn of the season. You can mail out a letter on Wednesday. Since they've taken away half of the sorting centers over the period of time, the post office is downsizing. It could take you a week to get them. It takes you a week to get it. You've got to do something in 10 days. Guess what? You only have three days.
Awesome.
And I think that should be the way to go. I like the idea of free notice. There's an advocate that's sending a notice of violation. Send you a notice of free notice. And I've got to read more of this and ask some more comments.
Thank you, folks. Anybody else? Say your name. I say your name. We're behind you. Come on.
Hi. My name is Mary. Mary St. James.
Andrew.
64 Grove Way. Um, I have reviewed the ordinance and I wrote something that I was going to submit to you just under the date as well. In reviewing the proposed ordinance, I have a request to modify the language regarding the definition of the violation. The ordinance as written allows for the ZEO to issue fines to the owner of a property even when the owner is not occupying the building. Additionally, fines can be levied against the owner or agent when neither has created a violation nor taken part in any way. These clear laws and circumstances that landlords and property owners must abide by when they are trying to enforce their lease, and even worse, is the process of litigation, which can be lengthy and expensive. To assess fines to the owner when it is the occupant that has proved the violation is improper and overregional. This ordinance should be modified to delete a significant portion of paragraph 3 and rewrite that section so those who are not taking part in creating or contributing to a violation are not assessed fines. The ability to do so is unjust, unjust, and undue hardship without cause. So I prepared this letter, but I also just wanted to stand up a little here on that because if you're the tenant, that's true, you have a problem. And you recognize that problem and you try to enforce it. I understand, you know, I've actually talked to people on this forum and I understand what you guys are trying to do and I appreciate it, but there's a bit of a problem if you have a tenant that's a problem. And even though your lease says that they have to abide by the regulations and ordinances of this town, to try to enforce that can be complicated. And if you are not able to do so, then you have to evict them. Well, that also is potentially the months, a month, several months' process. So by that time, you've accumulated all kinds of fines and now, you know, some people have said to you, "Well, then you go back after the tenant for the money to recover." I mean, obviously, that situation is completely far-fetched. So I don't mind that you guys are trying to enforce regulations and this ordinance, but I really think that it needs to be fine-tuned and focused on the people that are creating the violation. I really think that fine line is a big difference. And I understand as a, you know, as a property owner, that I have an obligation, and so do many other property owners, and I respect and appreciate that, but I just think there really could be a huge problem there. And I would like you all to reconsider just that portion of the language. And again, I appreciate the work that everybody's done here in trying to, you know, do better things for this town, but you also have to try to look after the people in this town, you know, and the people that made a lot of contributions themselves by owning property and taking care of it and trying to do the right thing. Because regardless of what you say, how it will be enforced, it could be enforced that way. And it seems overregional to me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Valdezett. I live in 78 Elsie County Road. I've been involved with the community of town. It goes about picking up trash, garbage, signing off the posts, and everything else. We have tried diligently to contact landlords to ask them to help us to enforce what we believe should be a natural type of thing. And what we've been told is, "It's not their problem. It's their tenants' fault." So consequently, moving home back and forth for three years now, spending our time going around the town, picking up stuff, asking people nicely if they would help to preserve and keep the town beautiful, but we have not gotten anywhere. So this may be a start, and I'm sorry about the owners. I understand your plight, but something has to happen. Something has to bring these people to realize, whether it's the owners or the owners and the tenants, that they don't have a right to make our town ugly.
I just want to say, I understand what you're saying, but the whole point that I'm trying to make is that if you want to enforce it onto these tenants, then they should be the ones that are fined. They should be the ones that are getting hit in the pocket because they're the ones that are doing it. And as much difficulty as you may be having with these tenants, you certainly just have to believe that the landlord potentially is having a little statement shot at it. So I just think you really, I mean, the way this, the way you can enforce it is by getting these tenants with the violation and the fine and not the owner. So that's all. And I appreciate that, your points.
Say your name.
Jeff Cashman, 66 River Road. I'm the owner of Osprey's Hill Farms in Clinton, and I'm the owner of Cashman Tool and Hardware. I have several documents in this file tonight that kind of just absolutely blow me away a little bit. First off, there shouldn't be a need for a fine here in our town at all. People are honest and they're forthright and they're doing their job. They're workable and shouldn't have an issue at all. When people become to be blind about certain things or things that they have rights to be able to do what they have to do. Every one of those violations on there has to do with my farm tonight. Tom Lane, who's in his room tonight, decided that we should go to a legal battle over something that has been--
Hey, I'm Jeffrey. You're starting to cross the line where we have this pending litigation. I understand that. And I'm trying to give a reason why. And we shouldn't be discussing--
Trying to give a reason why.
Excuse me. We can't discuss employees in the town? There's another issue that we don't want to cross. We don't want to cross those lines.
And I'll keep it limited to what I have to say and couldn't not call the--
You're not--
At this time, I don't believe that there should be a fine. I think that the people are doing their job here in the community, and it really gets down to this bottom line. If you have someone coming out telling you that you have a violation and they're basically here telling you tonight that from now on there will be a penalty, that's the same as a police officer pulling you over and saying to you, "Do you want the ticket that's for free or do you want one that you want to pay for?" It's really that simple. We as voters tonight are going to vote this to a degree where no one was for it, or obviously so. And at this point, I don't personally believe that one person should be in charge of all of this. I think that it should be if you were asking for a commission to be sitting here to review certain things, identifying the imposed, and then have that individual come in here. But that's possible to have one individual, a zoning enforcement officer, be blatantly writing all these declarations out there. I think that are wrong. I seriously do. And what I'm going through is the reason why I'm up here standing here tonight. I mean, it's disgusting. It's absolutely disgusting. Now, Will Seer, as a taxpayer in town, you want to Google who I am and what I've done for this town? Google it. Go on Clinton Patch and see what kind of a community guy I've been. I find what I've been going through and what my family's been going through has been absolutely wrong. Absolutely wrong. As businesspeople, we're trying to do our best to keep everything going in a community, cootin' our businesses, and we have people out there banging on our doors every minute trying to get another $10, another $5, another $3, another $8. I thought we paid for this stuff as taxpayers. I'm upset about what's going on with my farm on River Road. I'm real upset about it. I have to go home to a family every day as the breadwinner of my home and figure out how to pay bills because of what's going on in my home after 25 years. I've been good to this town, and it's disgusting my name is being slandered through this town. Makes my wife and I want to leave this town. And I have every right to stand in front of every taxpayer here tonight and say, "You know what? I'm not happy." I'm pissed. But I come home one night and I had a little girl bawling her eyes out that goes to school with Willie's kids. And I'm trying to be politically correct so there's no ramification to our school systems. Done everything I can possibly do as a human being and as a taxpayer in this town to make it better in our town, to do whatever I could to make it a little bit better and to try and survive in a community. I don't really want to lie. I just want to live in this town. I don't need to be rammed out of this town. I don't need to have it stuck to me. And if you knew the particulars about what I've been going through, well, then you would say, "My God, are you kidding me? It's disgusting." I'd love to know whose authority is more. Tom Wayne's is a police officer, a zoning enforcement officer, a police report that says half of the garbage we've been going through is ridiculous. I've never treated anybody in this town with the disrespect that I've gotten so far for the last year. What would Willie do? Look on the back of his bumper. Nothing.
My name is Carla Mulder, and they're suing me, so I'm assuming that he didn't say anything. But I have to say, I want to cry when I find out what I'm doing to Mr. Cashman, what you're doing to me. And then when you tell him he can't even stand up and defend himself, and I'm assuming I can't say anything either because I have a judgment that's pending.
Well, you know, first of all, the selectmen don't file lawsuits on behalf of the zoning board. The zoning board files lawsuits.
That's what goes on in this town. Nobody is responsible for anything.
And I'm sorry, but you know, they are an elected body as we are an elected body, and they have statutory authorities that the selectmen do not have. And again, we thought about lines and lines were not--
So everyone's involved in preservation. If you want to rip down my 1759 house that the state historical commission says is fine, the town historical commission, but you are going to sue me and I'm all decrepit, I'm crippled, I'm disabled, and you want me to hold out a lawyer to defend myself, to defend what you think is this great place in this town? And then you do this to Mr. Cashman? He has to spend money on an attorney instead of spending money for his kid for Christmas? You're outrageous. You're outrageous. I don't care who is. You're the first selectman. I didn't even bother coming to talk to you because I knew you'd do that and said, "It's not my fault." I talked to Mr. Bennett, the attorney. I've talked to people like Jeff Cashman. We try to be reasonable, but you are not being reasonable. How you could go after Mr. Cashman? Me, I'm an eccentric old New Yorker. You can come after me even though my family came here in 1663. So cut off your odd damn launch party and leave people like me alone. Mr. Cashman, you better leave him alone. He's a good man.
It's enough.
It's enough. Why isn't enough? I am coming to court. What's enough?
You should be in court.
Why? Because--
Because she's been--
Delapidated, this building--
Why? Because I'm sick.
John Wade Martin, I would like to know what this is with the signs. What do you mean by signs? What kind of signs are you talking about? I put a sign on my tree, on my front lawn, to vote no for the budget. And Tom Lane comes over and tells me it's against the law for me to put a sign on my own tree that I pay taxes on, and he told me I had to take it down.
I don't pay taxes on a tree.
Why can't I put a sign on my own tree, on my own property? Why is it against the law? When you go all around town, there's tag sale signs all over, phone poles, trees, no matter what, there's signs all over the town, but I can't put a sign on my own lawn or on my own tree?
We have sign regulations, which I was familiar with at one time when I was on the zoning board. And I know right now the only recourse the zoning board has is to attend day. You have 10 days to take it down if it's fine to be in violation of our sign regulation. At which point, after 10 days, what happens? You get another notice.
What is the sign regulation?
I said, "I'm not familiar with it at this point. I'm not on the zoning board anymore and I haven't been for a while."
I mean, I pay taxes on--
But people, and I'm not saying you people circumvent those ordinances and regulations because they know, "All right, I'll put it up nine days because 10 days, the event's over and I'm not going to get fined." But there is no mechanism to fine them now at this point anyway, which is what we provide.
What do we do about political signs that are rammed on our floor every day?
I can put a sign up, but I can't put a tree.
What do we do outside? Is that included in this? Willie, if you run again--
There's an unwritten--
Or Mr. Giannotti runs, you're going to get a $50 fine for every sign?
Political signs have to be of a certain size. They're regulated. They can't be above a certain square footage. Any of the signs that are bigger, I don't even remember what the square footage is. It's not very good. Any of the signs that are bigger, you have to come in and get a temporary sign from permit. You have to show what the sign is. You have to have the property owner, whose property it is going on, sign that permit. You have to pay the fee to have that sign. Okay? And again, go back to what I said, circumventing the regulation. So you put it up nine days before the election so you don't have to take it down if you haven't gone and gotten your permits, which I always make sure I do. But political signs, but then we also have in the regulations, which we really can't enforce, and I remember this from my days, is 30 days before the local election. You're not supposed to put them up. But if it was ever challenged, all right, that is a violation of freedom of speech to impose that. So we cannot challenge that. Okay? But usually, in most cases, local elections, we have a courtesy relationship between the town, the two parties in town, that we wait for 30 days before we start putting signs. And we stay within the square footage because we've actually had people going around begging and signing, and people have to walk about an inch off the signs.
The timeframe has been removed because that is illegal.
The timeframe?
Time--
Yeah, it has been taken out of the sign regulations? Okay. So we still stick, we do stick to that 30 days?
That's courtesy.
That's a courtesy. We do.
Yeah, I'd just like to suggest--
I say your name. Phil Single.
Phil Single, James Smith, and I. Who said this right at the beginning, but why don't we have somebody from Planning and Zoning talk about the rationale for this and why it's being done and what the intent is and that and--
Does anybody want, either Mike or Ansel, want to jump on that?
We can do that or we can defer it to the ZEO. He is the one--
You do it or we do it.
I'll lead up and do that. My name is Ansel, and I am a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Current member of Planning and Zoning, and I'm also a co-chair of the Regulations Committee on Planning and Zoning. And I just wanted to, the other co-chair is Mike Rossi, who's really between you and me, probably the chair. But we're co-chairs officially. The reason for this ordinance, plain and simple, we wanted to address a couple of issues. One issue is zoning enforcement officer gets a lot of complaints about properties that may be in violation, and he does not act unless there's a complaint. That's got to be made clear to the folks here tonight. You know, he doesn't go around looking for the problems because if they're not self-evident on the street level, he's not empowered to go on a person's property and find violations. That's just not the way to work.
I take the different, there's the only regulations that say upon knowledge, until they are supposed to be acting. I could give you those like regulations tonight.
Mr. Cashman?
Upon knowledge.
The purpose of this meeting, and I'm not going to step on selectmen's toes here, the purpose of this meeting is to consider this ordinance, have questions about it, and those questions be answered, not to discuss your specific situation for all the reasons that Mr. Fritz outlined. So with all due respect, sir, I'm not going to address you.
I have one question. Michael Lawley for some complaint. You said he doesn't act unless he has a complaint. Then does the person that the complaint of have a right to know who complained?
No.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a written complaint.
If it's a complaint that's filed in the land use office--
Then-- Then the complaint, they can't be found out. I mean, I'm not looking to come down on anybody, but if somebody's complaining about stuff I put up--
Even with the blade ordinance, if somebody has to sign that complaint.
And that's--
That's public ground.
This particular ordinance, I wanted to get back on the reason for having it in the first place. There is an enabling statute in Connecticut that allows this. And the reason the enabling statute allows it is because towns that have regulations have to have a regular approach to regulations. We presently have, without this ordinance, a method by which to enforce the zoning regulations because every town should have. The method that we employ today involves going to court altogether. And that method is lengthy, expensive, and frankly, from my viewpoint, inefficient altogether. So a fine citation and fine method tends to work better. At least, that's the finding that's been made by professional associations that are empowered to look into these issues. And it was proposed to us that we implement a fine situation so that we would be able to expedite the process, correct the violations, and to keep it local. What do I mean by keeping it local? By having a person selected by the first selected to hear any objection to the violations or the fines, we are able to discuss it here within our powers in town rather than at the Superior Court where ultimately a judge makes a decision that you may or may not like if you're a violator.
And I should point out that this local control really does give us a way of more rapidly dealing with this situation. The person who the selectman would choose to be that local judge or arbitrator, if you will, cannot be a member of the land use office, cannot be a member of Planning and Zoning or Board of Appeals. It has to be somebody completely separate from that. And so what it provides is a mechanism short of going to court for the individual who's being accused to rapidly get the case heard and a judgment made. If that judgment, if, you know, they still aren't happy with the judgment, they still have the right to go to court with it, but it does have that option in it. So what we've got here is a mechanism for a more rapid change. And one of the main concerns that I often hear is that, you know, when there's a problem on a property, it persists for a long time. Well, the reason it persists for a long time is that if the landowner is fighting it and it goes to court, the court process takes a long time. Okay? Whereas this would hopefully take care of it right away. And most individuals, once they receive that first citation, which they, the way that's done now, they realize that they inadvertently have violated the ordinance and they immediately fix it. Most people, that's how it is handled. We see that in the reports that we get at Planning and Zoning every month. So this is a way of just dealing with those cases that would otherwise have ended up in court and try to shortcut that and get it out of that situation.
I think the ultimate motivation behind it is to be efficient about it, to get some problems corrected, and to save not only the town money, but the individual money in the long run because if you bring it up to court instead, which is what the resolution would be today without this ordinance, that individual is going to have to hire a lawyer and spend all kinds of money and still not have a potential resolution that he or she is going to find agreeable. Because ultimately, the court is going to impose a penalty of some sort or order a cease and desist, and they lose anyway. This way, we can shortcut, hopefully shortcut the process, although as Mike has mentioned, we can always go--
Just wanted to ask a question. Is it possible that this, Vincent Neary-- Is it possible that this could be, I see you have a mediation thing which seems like makes a lot of sense, save the town money, the resident money, or the violator. Is it possible that you could still have the hearing procedure or mediation without the violations portion of this, I guess, ordinance? Is that a possibility with so many--
They need to request it right off the bat, once the notice--
You know, because you've got those far-reaching violations, and I think genuinely, everybody does want to comply, 99% of them. The other guys are going to go to court anyway. You know, the guys that don't want to comply, is that a possibility that the ordinance could be carried with this mediation hearing?
Well, it says in section four, paragraph four, paragraph B, number four, it says, "The alleged violator may contest his liability and facility at a hearing before a hearing officer by delivering in person within 10 days of the day of notice of violation." So prior to any fine being levied, you have the opportunity to come in and appeal it.
Well, maybe I can clarify a little bit. You would be issued a citation. On it would say the amount of the fine. Fine does not get imposed until you have the hearing. You know, there is mediation here. You know, you will have a hearing. They will decide if you warned it or if you corrected, they decide it. It's not going to exist. There's always that arbitration or hearing process.
And it does say mediation.
It's not mediation. It's basically, it's a hearing officer is what they call it. And basically, what you do is you come in and you present your case, you know, why or if you corrected it, why the citation, you know, it was a warning or something. You know, they can issue that and do away with the fine. They don't have to impose the fine, but it's up to them.
Shouldn't the fine follow the hearing? Though it--
It's--
It would make sense if the fine would follow the hearing.
The way they rule the law is you issue the citation which has the minimum fines on, then you go to your hearing process and he upholds either, it's in place, you pay this fine, or they take it away. It's a second backwards type of scenario.
So until you have, I mean, once you have the hearing, if it is determined that the person has a violation, is it retroactive to the time you gave the notice?
Not retroactive. It goes back to the hearing date. If it was a one-day citation--
It's only, once it's determined that that's upheld, that there is a violation or something.
So you can beat the ticket?
Yeah, you can beat the ticket. It's like, I don't know what I'm saying, a few years ago, they had the speed tickets. It was your first offense and it's the first time you ever had one, and basically, you sit down and agree to do, I forget what it was, like it was a minimal fee or something. You did away with it, plain and simple. There was no big $2,000, $50 fine anyone with or anything. It just went away and it's not on your record. And basically, that's what the hearing officers do. You know, you have to justify the fine. People will correct the fine. 90% of the hearing officers just do away with it. You know, but if you keep on going with, you know, something that's a willful act or something, they will impose the fine. And you know, like I said--
Yeah, Willie. Recognize me.
Regarding the fine, the fine is allowed to be up to $150 a day by state statute. We actually lowered it to $50 a day, but we still wanted to make a statement that the fine should be just nominal. But the state allows, the state statute, 8-12A, allows us to go up to $150 a day. Is that right, Mike?
You didn't do the statute, Mr.--
No, that's actually looking to issue under this. I'm actually thinking of offering a higher now.
Willie?
Yes, sir.
Carl Neary, 64 Grove Way. Got a question. I didn't read the whole ordinance, just listening to what's happening here. In my understanding, that the Planning and Zoning Commission has come up with this plan, okay? The zoning enforcement officer works for the Planning and Zoning, okay? But this is an ordinance that's controlled by the Board of Selectmen?
Planning and zoning does not have the authority of the United Organists, only the selectmen.
So what happens is you lose the possibility, which normally happens with a planning and zoning where you don't agree with them, that you can go to the Board of Appeals.
Not through violation.
I understand that. So why wasn't the thing structured to follow the local people to make the decision, right? For example, he cites somebody based on whatever ruling you make, okay? And if somebody doesn't agree with, they go to the Board of Appeals.
This is based on state statute.
I understand that. But why did we go that direction? It seems to me that it's more community-minded. If we follow our own rules that we handle, all planning and zoning issues before. It just seems like it's more equitable, it's more equitable, in my opinion, that in the case of somebody that gets cited, they go to the Board of Appeals, and those people look at it in the, in the light of the human aspect of it, in most cases, as opposed to the stringent rules.
Carl, the only way that works is if it works in favor of the property owner or the violator, and the zoning Board of Appeals fines against the zoning enforcement officer. Because if they find that the zoning enforcement officer properly issued a cease and desist order, it goes to court. That's the only other way it can proceed. And that's the reason why this ordinance is being proposed, to avoid actually going to court and leaving it here locally. So, while you bypass the zoning Board of Appeals route with a ZEO decision, you don't bypass the courts this way, by having it go to zoning board.
But you always have the opportunity to go to court, no matter what happens.
Well, yes, but chances are that it's not gonna go to court, and it will be resolved right here in town with the, what's it called, commissioner that's gonna hear the hearing.
Hearing officer.
Hearing officer.
Or officers.
And who is that hearing officer? Who appointed?
First selection appointed the hearing officer.
How many are there?
Is there one officer, or more than one? Is there a mediation for, or is there one or more?
I think the hearing.
I just wanna ask, would these fines be in addition, say, in a situation where someone ended up going to court because they couldn't resolve it through the, that call of mediation, the hearing process? I mean, these fines are fifteen hundred, three thousand, forty-five hundred dollars a month. If you're doing it by the day, would that be in addition to the hundred and fifty dollars?
It could very well be in addition.
I mean, that could really, you know, someone that would fix any problem.
It's up to a judge to decide whether the state's gonna put LTs on you.
On top of these.
On top of that.
Because it, you know, a month is nothing in real time.
Well, I understand that, but it's...
This could be significant to someone.
That's why there's a hearing process, and you go through that, and if you want, you can always appeal the decision to ZBA, that's still in place, and you go that route, which puts a stay on them. You know, people don't realize that once you apply to them, it puts a stay on the action, which means you can't issue them the same citations for the same violation.
I mean, this would probably guarantee that you're going to court. If you start racking up fines like this, someone's gonna have no option than go to court.
Well, it's an option, but some people, you know, use it as an incentive to stop the violation. Some of them are...
Maybe the ones who chooses, but the people that are violation, you know, that are not gonna try to comply, they're gonna go to court anyway, and this is gonna push them that direction.
This is a tool to get people to comply, usually. It's kinda like the wetlands by citations that are issued, and they work very well. Basically, the towns that have them in place, if you don't get the violation, it's like you used to.
One of the problems we're gonna have going forward is, you got a neighbor that doesn't like you, now he's got you in a box.
That's always the case.
Now, it isn't always the case, because there is no fines the other way.
That's why this gentleman's sitting over here, that's where that comes from. All right, Tori, you had your hand.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you guys understand, no responsible for a lot of the problem, is a certified mail return receipt.
I considered that a friendly amendment. I mean, I thought that that, I would have, that I had no, I would have had no objection.
Okay, the second thing is that the definition of received notice should be the date the person signs for that certified mail, not the date of the time of the mail. Because they haven't received notice until that date. So, you give them the time from that point forward, not from the time you had your meeting and it went through the secretary, postal service, delivery man, finally got to your door, you can get the mail.
If they refuse to receive, well, that was the latest that...
If they refuse to receive, then you go to Plan B, whatever that is. But the point is, you've gotta give people time to respond. Now, ten days, a period of a day is not, first of all, any day should be business days, because people don't work on Saturdays and Sundays usually. Either you can't come to you and say, hey, what's the problem? The second thing is, it should be more like thirty days or sixty days, because people work. If there's a problem and it needs to be addressed, they're not gonna take time off and pay the job to address it, they're gonna do it, the weekends, whatever. But you need to give them time to do something, and which they can take care of, because that's all you wanna do, is wanna get them to a date, wanna take care of the problem. So, it goes away, everybody's happy, right?
And if they come in within that ten days...
But if they're not here, say they're on vacation, say they don't...
They could do it within, right.
Say they don't get their mail, they're away for two weeks, they come home and find this thing, oh my God, for ten days' time. Come on, we gotta be realistic, give them thirty days, what's the rush?
You can think of the many scenarios that, why they wouldn't get it. You have to set the, the time, and you gotta set the way we're gonna do it.
But let's set it thirty days, maybe thirty business days. That way, there's, there's time, people have gotten the notice, they say, oh my God, I gotta clean my act, I gotta do whatever, and you make arrangements to do it. And ninety percent of people are gonna say, mm, follow that up, and say, wait, it's done, take it off the timeline.
That will take care of it in ten days and thirty days, they can be on vacation for two months, everyone, same thing. Same with that report, I understand the certified letter, by that, but if the person refused to sign, I think you gotta be able to come back and say, okay, it's a two truck.
Well, if they refuse to sign, then you have a police officer show up, depending on the order, and stick it on the door.
All right, we're not gonna get into...
No, no, just somebody having to serve it.
The fact that, the fact that...
The problem is, you're never gonna have a...
Can I say something please? Michelle Mary, Bluff Avenue, property owner, business owner, twelve years taxpayer. Just would like to say, I would not like to see Mr. Lane or the zoning enforcement officer being used as a weapon in this town. I know he has a job to do, I know he's trying to clean up, et cetera, but I would like to see some language in there where when somebody files a complaint, maybe perhaps he meets with the owner first, before he acts on the complaint or the violation, see what else is going on. Like any, you know, good parent, you kinda listen to both sides of the story before you actually act on a violation, or, you know, telling somebody to clean up garbage when there's really no garbage there, et cetera. So, you know, I mean, that's, that's a simple suggestion that maybe you guys can put some language in there. The other thing is, sometimes when somebody files a complaint, there is something else going on in the background that Mr. Lane's not aware of, or whoever the zoning enforcement officer is at the time. Recently, we had been asked to buy a neighboring property for several hundred thousand dollars. We didn't answer, we didn't say yes or no, and a week later, there was a complaint filed against us. So, you know, it's almost like a blackmail situation for me, that I feel.
That's where the hearing officer would actually be very useful for me.
Right, and, but I'm expressing that here, because you guys are writing an ordinance, and you don't have all this knowledge sometimes. You know, I mean, you guys see zoning for square footages and, you know, other things where sometimes you don't know stuff that goes on in the background.
They've been doing it for quite a while.
No, 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 I mean, but...
Not based on how they look, right?
But when, not, has he ever, has it ever been that when somebody files a complaint, that he meets with both parties first, before he acts on it?
Well, I think you should know, though, that this ordinance was a draft that all fought by the two of us, or four of us, or nine of us.
Oh, no.
We have town, we have counsel, Planning and Zoning has counsel, and counsel is the one that drafted it, and he's highly experienced in this area. I mean, like it or not, that's how we do things.
She likes that.
I'm just expressing my opinion.
Tonight, I, just as an example, I drove a vehicle large down that we go to the most, I'm gonna share a funny story, a long positive note there. The truck I drove down here is known as Roadrunner. The truck everybody was waiting for at Christmas time was called Radio Flyer. The truck I drive, my duly, everybody knows by the hand wave I'm down the road. Those trucks came into our farm, and we took parts and pieces, and we made those beautiful trucks. And you walk out tonight by the gazebo, look at the truck that I own. Junkyard, and what farmers do is they take pieces of equipment, and they make them work for their needs. This truck, I will challenge anybody in this room whose equipment, I'll park it right next to yours, as used, thrown away equipment. And I'll challenge from Dale Hesser to anybody who's got a piece of equipment that looks as good as mine, and this is what we're being called as a junkyard. I park those trucks with great pride. I take great pride taking my daughter and teaching her how to use wrenches. It's the time I have with my family after working all day long. Radio Flyer was designed to go out so that we could sit there with a little girl, and we could go out, and we could make deliveries at nighttime, so I could spend time with my little girl. I miss my little girl. Her safari hat and her teddy bear is on the front seat. Just the other day, we were at Shoprite, loading milk for a project here in town, and Heather got to show the guys at Shoprite how she could move dads duly ahead, so another truck from the fire department could load. My daughter has one of the most wonderful experiences on our farm, and I think it's absolutely wonderful to be able to provide a good wholesome environment for my daughter. She's a straight A student in school. In tonight's conversation, before coming down there, she was arguing we were going to the computer before Mom did, so she could check out how she got a grade in school. We live in this town, we interject in this town, we love this town, and we live in this town. When it gets to be overboring or other bearing for people, people kick in and they help. That's what we do. We help those little old ladies who need a helping hand.
God, thank you.
We do. We help them. It's what we're supposed to do. Not supposed to stick it to them, we're supposed to help. That's what God would have us do, is to help those people who need helping hands, not to sit there and crucify them because of their failures. Carl, I remember a workday, Willie remembers that workday, where we came in and we did that for you. Only a call away to try and help you clean up that mess. Same way we did with Tom Lane's secretary, Sherry Hines, who needed a helping hand. How many vehicles would that classify as a junkyard in her property, but nobody could even? We help that moment, we help that man with cancer. It's what our community does. We help each other. Because we help each other, we respect each other. Sometimes people don't know that there's a violation, they don't know that there's something going on. They don't know because that's all that they can do, is get to the mailbox and not notice the graph is off. We do have a blank ordinance in town for specific reasons. I haven't seen it been pushed yet.
A big change to report tonight from inside that...
I would like this...
Big change. I believe this is a voting issue tonight. We have the opportunity to vote, either pay a fine or not, is that right?
Order is about to go around.
Okay, I'd like to roll it on. I think at this point, there's a lot of good people from the pretty committee, people who are out there all day long, who are out there working. We see it, we thank you for your work. I have a yellow shirt also, too. I try and do my best every time there's a community project out there. I give you whatever I possibly can. I do, whenever there is a need in town, I really, really do try. I'd like to think that I'm an example in town. Yeah, I am frustrated, for ten months' worth of frustration in my own home, when we had it really well on River Road. We really did. I tried to be a good citizen, I tried to be a good man, I tried to be a good example, I tried to be a good business leader, I tried to be a good investor in this community, and I think that we nearly need to back off and say, what can we do more, as opposed to sticking it to our community, what more can we do to help? I think that's, that's what our focal point really is. There are people with beautiful homes, and they really do try, and they're out working every day, I do understand it, but I just wanna leave on a positive note. You know what? I think things are really wonderful in this town, I don't wanna do it anywhere else. I love this town, I love the people in it, and that's all.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, a couple of things occurred to me. When I, when I drive around town, I see a lot of problem properties, I see a lot of junk, call them lighted, whatever you wanna call them. So, I am in favor of anything that helps improve the enforcement effort to clean up these properties. I don't know if this is the right ordinance, or no ordinance is perfect, there's all the pros and cons, and people always working around it, but it just seems to me, something has to be done about the state of so many properties that are just unsightly. And we all know, human nature being what it is, people will take advantage of a lax system. And apparently, that's what we've got, a lax system with no teeth, and so people take advantage of it. So, I think we have to step up and do something. Now, maybe you need to adjust the ordinance, I don't know, I can't, I can't tell you. The second thing, on the basis of the certified letter, that's fine, you can send certified letters. But if you think, it's sort of been implied, implied here tonight, that in most cases, this is the first time these people have heard of this problem, is when they get a certified letter. I'm sure nothing could be farther from the truth. It doesn't work that way, it's, that's not the first time you, somebody got a problem, you've probably been hounded for a year or more, then you get a certified letter. So, you wanna give them another ten days or whatever, that's fine, that's reasonable, but to suggest they don't know they got a problem is ridiculous. So, I would support doing something, it's up to you to figure out what that is. Can you take one more, Tori?
Might throw in the thirty days where there's, that you have to remedy. Okay? The second thing I thought was great was if you meet with old people, that would be excellent, if maybe you can find out where the problem, maybe you can meet some little road. The third thing is, maybe a lot of people are older people. List of resources, all the voice cards, all the volunteer tips or something, help them out, something, because they just beyond people's needs. So, all you're looking at is dollars, no equity in the house.
We have on that, Tori, you can attest to that, we've gone to people's properties where they were disabled.
But what I'd like to suggest is, put the letter, come make a resource, this, if you're in contact to help you out, we're interested in helping this community, rather than, we got an annoying and definitely...
You stand a, a younger lady who's disabled, and we make sure she's got her garbage taken away, in a couple of weeks, she'll pile it on the porch, there's no way to get it done.
Okay, well, that's the type of thing, for people that aren't aware of this, and maybe they're a fan.
We, we, we find out when somebody has an issue, and then we find one, it's the way to get that resolved. Tom has come to me with issues, people that have no means of taking care of it, and we figured out a way.
Okay, okay.
Well, I, I think that's part of the reason that we wanna keep it local, rather than throwing it at the courts immediately, because the court is gonna be black or white, you're gonna elect, and I'm gonna hate it. Here, there may be a way through solvency.
If it violates, it's a violation, and typically, I know, you usually talk to them.
And so, then we got this person we did.
And, and, you know, if they, and if they get a violation, they come and they say that here, we have a problem, and, well, we figure out a way to help you take care of it, clean it up a little, and you do that.
Okay.
If it's within our means, better mention.
My thought always, give us thirty days, because that way, they got a chance to do whatever, contact people, if they, well, if it's in pickup, I would have been able to follow it, weekend, something, the simple, maybe, maybe a truck, they don't wanna take outside of it. They wanna keep them there. That would be my suggestion. What's the difference between ten or thirty days? It's not three hundred, you know, it's, it's very short.
I think the way it began, if I may, is, you know, we sought advice of counsel, and he tracked the statute exactly. I think that's how it came about. About ten days may be short, maybe we can, we'll get to that. Thirty days, in my opinion, if I happen to be a lawyer, is a bit long.
But if somebody's working, and they're doing this on the weekends, where I will face the problem, they wanna help you, they're not...
I'm not gonna debate it, all I'm saying is, you're gonna have to get back to the case.
Ten, ten days, it's smart. Ten, ten more days is...
Well, what's gonna, what, what, I'll put it on the selectmen's agenda, that will follow me.
Next week's the morning.
Yes, we'll put it on, and we'll discuss, everybody's gonna walk onto here this evening, the selectmen, and the members of the zoning board with a lot of information to digest, and then, you know, we'll, the selectmen will discuss, and we may end up deferring back to the planning and zoning board, sending it back to them to see if they wanna modify it. Any changes that have to be, may have to be brought back to the public hearing anyway.
That segues perfectly into what I wanted to ask you, to not act on it.
I could read your mind.
I know, isn't I crazy? So, I, I do actually, in further thinking about this gentleman, first of all, I wanna say, I've actually never had a citation or a fine or anything, so I don't really know what it's like, but I like, I just reading this, and I'm trying to give you guys my fair assessment of what I think, from a person who's lived here my whole life, hoped to live here another forty-something years, I won't tell you exactly, but, and I have a lot of properties, and so that is my concern, but I do think that, I just want you to be even and fair to everybody. And, you know, maybe someday, Tom Lane will be here, and there'll be another ZEO, and I'm like eighty, and, you know, if something happens, I, I want, I just wanted someone to look at this ordinance and to, and to apply it properly and fairly, and I just don't think, my issue with the order thing, I've already reiterated, but I just wanted to say that I do support this gentleman's position in regards to the thirty days, because you do have to think about, if you are gonna try to repair something or do something, there's a climate weather, it's snowing, you have no idea what the situation is. It's a perfect example, they could be away for two weeks, I mean, some people go away for two weeks. So, by the time you get it, by the time you turn it around, by the time you evaluate it, and what, I know what you just mentioned, is that Tom will basically come and tell you in advance, but you don't know, I'm not saying I have great neighbors, too, but if the neighbor does find something, you don't know, because it could be something that's not necessarily something that you were aware of. So, I do think it's realistic, as much as I totally admire the attorney that works on it, I do think that we should have our own number of days, and I do think it should be thirty, because I think that's fair to turn something around. All right, thank you.
One more.
Charlene Guest, Seven Grove Street. I just have a question about item two, all of the violations. Are there written codes or procedures for...
Regulations.
Regulations for each of these items that are already on the books somewhere, that